Okay. I'd like to convene the January, or February the 3rd, 6th meeting, sorry about that, of the Union County Board of Commissioners. And with that, Vice Chair Melissa Merrill has invocation and the Pledge of Leaders.
Our Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight as a board and staff with thankful hearts for our Union County, and we ask for blessings and protection over each and every one here, young and old, as we work to represent our county. We humbly ask you for your grace, wisdom, and discernment as we make decisions here tonight and always. We ask for your continued blessings over Union County, our state, and this great country, especially for those who serve and protect us. In your holy and precious name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, we have the informal comments. I believe we have a couple of people signed up for informal comments. First name Samantha Don. And if you would, just tell where you're, what city you live in.
Okay.
Give your full name.
Sounds good. I'm Samantha Don. I live at 3616 Bounty Court, which is technically a Matthews address, which is half the reason I'm up here tonight. So I am speaking to you today as a resident of Union County, and I hope in the months and years to come, that remains true. My property is one of many on the Union County-Mecklenburg County border that could potentially be transferred to Mecklenburg County. We purchased a Union County home. The thought of being transferred to Mecklenburg County based on a decades-old error is frankly inconceivable. I grew up here in Union County, and when the opportunity presented itself for my family to move back, we took it. We moved here for the fantastic schools, lower taxes, and conservative values that Union County is known for. I was horrified to see my property highlighted on the map that was presented by our tax assessor as possibly impacted. I listened to the Mecklenburg County Born Accounting Commissioner meeting where they discussed this issue. I listened to one commissioner make disparaging remarks about Union County, my home. I listened to their commissioners speak only of financial impacts and completely ignore the human ones. The impacts on families must not be overlooked in these discussions. At their, in their own tax assessor's words, the tax revenue that could be potentially gained by Mecklenburg County was not even needle-moving. So the impact to Mecklenburg County of these homes transferred is very, very small, but the impact to families is incalculable. If actions need to be taken, I'm requesting that this board and Mecklenburg County do right by the impacted homeowners and take the necessary steps to honor the county information provided to residents when they purchased those homes. Union County is my home, and I want to keep it that way. Thank you. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have David Ransenberg.
Hello. I'm David Ransenberg. I live in Charlotte at 7514 Christopher Place. I feel kind of humbled by what just was said, but I want to tell you guys about a project that I'm trying to do, and I believe my partner talked to you, Mr. Rushing, Doug Levin. It's, it's off of Stevens Mill Road, and we went through a lot of iterations and discussions with the town of Stalling. So we tried to take advantage of their small area plan, which increases the density, and I believe that's what Union County wants in terms of be efficient with their utilities. Went through a lot of process, went through a lot of, of public hearings and everything, and the, the Public Works Department actually began telling us what we needed to do for sewer, and the problem was is that it was kind of misleading and off completely. We spent the next three years trying to get an understanding of what it was, and I talked to Mr. Matthews as well. So I come here today because I feel like we're doing the right things in terms of what needs to be done in Union County, what's been requested of us to do, and what our arduous processes presented us with. So I'm requesting you guys take a very close look at the Crooked Creek expansion for the sewer. And I, I say that not only for myself, but I think it's the wise thing to do, in my opinion, about expanding density along a major corridor. I think that's where you guys want it, but I'm not 100% sure it makes sense to me. So while I stand here humbled asking this, I do think that not only mine, but all the projects involved in this would pay for itself with that extension very quickly. I figured out mine, mine alone with, my taxes alone, to Union County would be about a 3% return from the $15 million it takes. And there's a numerous number of other, other projects along there, including the expansion of the hospital. So in my, in my circumstance, being kind of led down a couple of paths that I thought were correct, and also by the Public Works who gave us some information that turned out to be incorrect, and I'm in this process right now, that I'm waiting for you guys to, to approve this thing so I can get on with what I thought everybody wanted. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's all we have signed up to speak. Did anybody miss the signup sheet or would like to speak? Okay. Next, we have public hearings. First, we start with 23-024, Public Hearing Resoning Request, CZ-2022-003. Some, I thought, some, say it.
Seminelli.
Seminelli, there you go. And you're going to be handling this one, boy?
Yes, sir. Give me, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a public hearing for a rezoning. That is CZ-2022-003, meaning it is a conditional rezoning. This is a request to rezone one parcel that's a little more than two acres along Crane Road near Marvin Ridge High School to subdivide it into four lots. This would be R-20 with conditions would be the specific zoning district. The conditions are listed below. It's essentially taking one existing home, knocking the house down, dividing it into four lots, and then developing them. This is the site plan. There is a private drive, not a public road, but a private drive that would serve all four parcels, so all four would be served by this. And one of the benefits compared to a buyright development is that this would actually be a road that is 20 feet wide as opposed to just a gravel driveway that would be more difficult to serve for emergency vehicles. In terms of existing conditions, Crane Road, a lot of buffering from adjacent subdivisions, but you can see them from the adjacent parcel specifically to the south of the site. This is the existing house that's on site. In terms of development status, again, you can see that there's a lot of subdivisions nearby. The overall zoning is, is R-40, but these were developed under a combination of smart growth and cluster subdivisions over the years. So this would be R-20, which is different than what the surrounding zoning is. In terms of environmental features, there's no streams or wetlands on site. It is forested, however. The zoning, again, is R-40, which is consistent with the area around it. Transportation, Crane Road carries approximately 800 cars per day. That counts a couple of years old, and there's no funded improvements along Crane Road. Land use plan calls for this area to be single-family residential, which with, when utilities are present, recommends a density of approximately two units per acre. Public schools were commented, or I consulted for comments, and they said because it's considered minor, it won't have a noticeable impact on schools. Union County Waters comments for that. Site does have access to water or sewer, and it's within the Six Mile Basin, which has sewer capacity. Public feedback, community meeting was held in November, seven attendees. It was actually held at Marvin Village Hall, and no comments or email, no phone calls or email comments have been received. Some questions have been asked, but no comments about the rezoning. And municipal feedback was solicited from Marvin, and none has been received as of today. So this was presented to the planning board last month. We noted that in terms of negatives, obviously, if you're taking one parcel and turning it into four, so there will be an increased impervious surface and potential runoff from that, but the positives are that this can be served by utilities, the density is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the fact that it includes that cul-de-sac will improve fire service for the rear two parcels. So we recommended approval, the planning board recommended approval, and tonight we're asking for a public hearing to be conducted and then action taken at your February 20th meeting. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Did not see the applicant in the audience. I don't know if he showed up since then, but they were at the planning board.
Any questions?
Just one. The demolition of the existing home, was there a resident there or no longer there?
I believe it's empty, but I can't say for sure, but I'm pretty sure it's empty.
Any other questions? Recommendation from the planning board, split or unanimous?
It was unanimous.
All right. And you said the developer was here or?
I don't believe they're here.
Okay. So no other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Close that public hearing. And next, yes? Oh, yeah, didn't have anyone sign up? Anyone in the audience want to speak for or against the project? None? Now we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Next, we have the consent agenda. We just had the one public hearing. Next, we have the consent agenda. Anybody want to make a motion or remove anything from consent? All right. Motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Next, we have business. We're going to put the opioid settlement at first unless there's any objections. Anybody have objections to that? I think we had some folks in to talk about that, and they asked if they could go first. Any objections?
Nope.
Let's start with 23-048, Opioid Settlement Work Group Report and Recommendations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm going to kick this presentation off this evening with a little bit of background, and then we have several folks in the audience who are going to help present the work that the opioid work group has been doing over the last several months for your consideration tonight. Just a little background refresher for folks regarding the opioid settlement. There's some key points here. The state worked with the National Opioid Settlement of $26 billion that North Carolina is receiving, $757 million, with 80% of that slated to go to local governments and 15% to the state to deal with the opioid crisis in local communities. So several months ago, this board entered into an MOA with the state that outlined how the money would be divided between the state, counties, and a few municipalities, and how it could be used, and these dollars will be received over the next 18 years. So this has a very long runway and expectation of how these dollars will be used in the future. This simply shows you what the expected share from that initial MOA will be for Union County, so just slightly less than $9.5 million between 2022 and 2038. The first calendar year, you see there's expected slightly larger chunks of the settlement that would come. We have received these funds. They have to be placed in a special revenue fund to be used only for these purposes. One of the things that I wanted to highlight, and some of you may have seen this in the last couple of weeks, there actually are expected additional settlements. And so a pretty large one has just occurred, another nationwide settlement that involves some of the large retailers, and that one is expected to be about the same amount of money that would come to the, to North Carolina and the local governments, so another $9 million, with the same expectations. We will be asked, and we will bring this to you when we have received it, to sign another MOA with basically the same expectations, but just reiterating those for this future settlement and how those dollars would be used. So you can kind of keep that in mind, that this will probably look more like $18 million over the next 18 years at least. So the way that Union County chose to, to look at this settlement and how it could be used in the community was to put together a work group that started working last year at the, in August, I believe, is when we had our first meeting. We gathered folks together who represent the community either from an expertise standpoint or their perspective professionally and how they work in the community. We identified with that group a mix of short-term and long-term approaches for addressing the opioid situation specifically in Union County. So looking at Union County data, Union County perspective, Union County experience, and all the, the talent that came into the room to have those discussions. And this is really to look at how we can utilize these funds best in a place where we don't do direct opioid work currently. So we knew we needed to kind of think a little differently about how we would approach this. So here are the, the list of folks. Many of them are here in the room, so I would ask anybody who participated in the work group to stand so you can see the, the group of folks that you have, the talent. They bring a lot of talent, a lot of commitment. They worked incredibly hard, spent a lot of hours together with Ed Gagnon being the facilitator, and then tonight you're going to hear from many of them, and then I'm going to come in at the close with the ask that we have to support the recommendations. So I'm going to hand it off to Stephanie Starr.
All right. Good evening, Chairman and board members. I'm here tonight to discuss the impact of the opioid crisis here in Union County, and there are a few data points that I want to mention. First, the number of deaths and the number of emergency room visits were much higher between 2020 through 2022 than in 2019. Second, when we look at the data on the opioid overdose emergency department visits, I know this slide is super busy, and this is 2022 data. You can see that the opioids are impacting all populations and age groups in Union County, and while no populations are immune to the impact, the data on this slide shows that those of white ethnicity and those in the 25 to 44-year-old range are impacted disproportionately higher than the percentage of those groups make up of the total population. In addition, it's also important to note that fentanyl, which is, you can see in purple on the left-hand side of the screen, is now contributing issue in at least one emergency department visit each month, except for one month on here, whereas in 2018, 2019, there were absolutely none emergency department visits documented with fentanyl. So that is definitely something we're seeing a huge rise in. And the last data point that I want to point out, and again, I know this is also a pretty colorful slide, but this slide shows the suspected opioid-related calls made to EMS between January through November of 2022. And although there are a few spots that have higher volume of calls, this map also demonstrates that opioid impact all areas of our county. So you can see numbers in the east, in the west, the north, and the south. So again, opioids, they affect everyone and everywhere in this county. And I'm going to hand over the presentation to Heather Gardner and Dalton Russell, who are going to share some additional information about the impact of opioids with you.
Hi. My name is Heather Gardner. I'm Executive Director of Cameron's House of Hope. I just wanted to touch base. The overdoses in the slide that Stephanie shared with you tonight represents children right here in our community whose parents have died of an overdose or who have been affected. They've lost the parents of this drug overdose. The children of parents in active addiction are living with trauma in very, in many, many forms. So I want to just highlight a couple of those trauma pieces. That would be abandonment, feeling unloved, shame, stigma in their schools, isolation, the emotional neglect that they receive in their household of not receiving any love, feeling unwanted, loneliness, isolation, again, verbal abuse, physical abuse, clothing and food insecurity. So those are just to name a few. The feeling of guilt that the child carries, they blame theirself for their parents' addiction at times. The fact that suicide is a thought in their young mind is too much for the children to bear, especially when your age is eight, 10, and 12. So we need to address their emotional and mental health before they grow up to numb the pain of their childhood trauma with another substance and greater, there's going to be more overdoses from that. So investing in the lives of our children, in our schools, our Department of Social Services, and the community will help prevent substance use in their future. Thank you.
Yeah. My name is Dalton Russell. I work for Partners Health Management. Also, I'd like to state I'm also a person in long-term recovery. So I share that with you to share that this is the lens that I'm approaching this from. I will say that each, each one of these numbers on that screen, that, that's a human being. That, that's a person's life. And as my partner mentioned, you know, childhood trauma is a leading predictive indicator that a person will wind up in active addiction. And we know that an overwhelming majority to the tune of north of 90%, we don't have the exact numbers, but it's north of 90% in Union County, children that are involved in child protective services, their parents also live with addiction. And if you were to take that back, their parents probably also had some level of addiction. There was some level of trauma there, so on and so forth on down the line, and it just grows, and it gets bigger, and it's gets bigger, it's gets bigger. So two things I want to highlight. One, unintentional overdose is a leading cause of death in our country under the age of 49. It is not getting better. It is getting substantially worse as the data shows us on a daily basis. Right now, today, it is worse than it's ever been in the history of our country. Two, I want to point, point out to you that when people are in recovery, not only do their children stop experiencing that trauma, but those children also get the safe, stable adult that they need to be able to help mitigate and manage the trauma that they've experienced. People that are in recovery do things like buy homes, they work jobs, they pay taxes, they're contributing members of society, and I know this because that's my story. That's who I am. So anyways, just wanted to say that. Thank you for having me here tonight. Appreciate you.
Okay. I'm going to present a little bit longer. As Deputy Director Lancaster mentioned a little while ago, the opioid settlement work group was about collaboration. Everyone at the table had different expertise, different knowledge, and different philosophies, and yet everyone came to work together to address this very important issue, to come up with a unified vision, mission, and goals. So how did we do this? We met five times between August and December. We agreed to use the state's collaborative strategic plan methodology, which is in your Exhibit A in your packet. We actually listened to some partner presentations about best practice approaches to help those with opioid addiction. We worked between meetings, doing research and filling out surveys, and we worked to align our goals with the state's opioid substance use action plan goals of preventing opioid use, reducing harm due to opioid-related substance abuse, and connecting affected individuals to care and support needed. So our group came up with a shared vision, mission, goals, and population indicators, which are measures, and we did all of this with a collaborative approach in mind, and all of these, as I mentioned, were aligned with our state goals, again, which are, which are on this page, too. So just to read our vision that we came up with, because we're really proud of this, it's to promote a healthier quality of life for the county, Union County community by preventing harm and death caused by opioid misuse. Now, I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Dubay from Wingate University, who will talk more about the root causes of the opioid crisis.
Thank you, Chairman and Board, for having us here today. It is absolutely no doubt that the opioid crisis continues to wage its war, especially in Union County. One of the things we came up with as a group is to really identify the root causes of the opioid crisis. As a researcher, as somebody who's conducted epidemiologic research for two decades on substance use disorders, which is a clinical diagnosis based on the American Psychiatric Association gold standard, we determined that evidence-based treatments are needed. But in order to look at those evidence-based treatments and understand them, we also have to understand what are the root causes so we can prevent and mitigate this opioid epidemic. So to that end, on this slide, I highlight a few of the root causes. These were identified not just from the research by researchers done over decades, but when we came together as a stakeholder work group, we also heard from the community members that their observation in the community validated what researchers were finding. So for example, over-prescribing of pain medications due to marketing and promotions, easy access. So I'm sure you're familiar, may be familiar with the statistic that in North Carolina, over 20% of 11th grade students say they actually use prescribed medications without a prescription. So easy access to both prescription medications without a prescription, fentanyl use, as was documented by Stephanie, in terms of the increase of that in Union County as an illicit drug. And also Heather outlining trauma, adverse childhood experiences, as she was discussing, those are actually known risk factors for the opioid epidemic in adults. And the problem is, is we get to gaps in the community, is that the response and the strategies, there, there's, there's a lack of continuity of care, especially for those who are really working to try to get treatments, recovery, they, they get lost. They get treatment, there's no proper tracking, don't know where they are. So we really need to close that gap in the community response. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name's Kevin Walsh. I'm the owner and director of operations slash counselor for New Beginnings, which is an outpatient treatment center here in Union County. Been hearing a lot of dismal stuff already from everyone tonight, and I want to offer you a little bit of hope, okay? And, and that hope is treatment. What we do know about opioid addiction, as is all addictions, is, is that they are, it is treatable, okay? And there's, there's several different types of treatment options that are available. We have what is known as, as just regular in-office outpatient treatment. There also is opioid treatment programs that are inpatient slash outpatient treatment programs. They can vary from short-term to long-term, either being 30, 60, or 90-day programs. Then there's also residential communities. Some of you may be familiar with places like Bridges or Ground 40, those types of residential communities. Also, what we see to be very effective- Also, what we see to be very effective for opioid disorder is what's known as medicated assisted treatment, okay? Now, what medicated assisted treatment is, it's a combination of the use of medications with counseling and other therapies, right? And it's, it's actually been, been, it's, it's, well, it's probably one of the most popular type of treatments and most receptive by the person that is addicted. And the reason being is because it, it takes away the craving, they don't have to go through the detoxification or the withdrawals. I don't know how many of you are familiar with withdrawals from opioids, but they, they're terrible. Imagine, I'm sure all of you or some of you have had the flu. Imagine having the flu 10 times over, okay? That's what an opioid withdrawal is like. And so a lot of people don't want to enter into recovery or treatment just because they don't want to suffer from the withdrawals. And so it's important, you know, that we, we take that craving away in that withdrawal, and we can do that with medicated assisted treatment. Now, this isn't just something where it's just, you know, one dose and, and that's it, okay? It, it is also combined with counseling and therapy and support. Once we, we take away that craving, now we can start to focus on things like Arrested Development, past childhood trauma, past trauma period. We can start to take care of basic needs, food, clothing, shelter, employment, get people employment ready. They can actually be on medicated assisted treatment and, and hold down good jobs and steady jobs. And so it is, it, it's proven to be, be very effective. And, and like any kind of treatment, okay, we need support for that. We need community support, we need support from the family, and you need support from the recovery community. And, and that's, that's very vital. And so to talk a little bit more about what the recovery community has to offer is, is Dalton. He's going to come up here and, and enlighten you guys a little bit on some of the resources that he has.
All right, so it's really important that we have transitional housing for people, that we have an opportunity for people to live in an area where they can find sobriety, be around other people that also support their sobriety while they're getting involved back in the community. You know, supported housing is incredibly important. We want to increase naloxone and syringe access services. You know, in doing so, we, we increase the opportunities for people to stay alive because the truth is, is that if I'm not alive, then I can't recover, you know? It's very important. Expanding, expanding treatment resources like we talked about, getting people involved in treatment, getting people connected into inpatient treatment, getting people connected into outpatient treatment, medication assisted treatment, all those things are incredibly important. And then we also want to expand peer support. As I was talking about before, you know, I shared with you guys, I'm a person in long-term recovery. Having a person that's in long-term recovery to connect with somebody else is an incredibly important piece. The great thing about a peer support specialist is a peer support specialist is a liaison between the client and the clinician. The client is often coming from a world that they don't maybe always understand where the clinician's coming from, and that peer support specialist can help bridge that gap. And once that peer support specialist is able to help bridge that gap, there's, they're essentially creating more buy-in for the, the person that's receiving those services to, to engage with the clinician. And that's an incredibly important piece in, in making treatment more effective. Historically speaking, the way that we've done treatment is we've kind of had this idea of like, well, it's over here, show up if you want to, if you don't, you know, whatever. And we found that that's not always the most effective way to do it. So having a peer support specialist, having somebody that's doing community outreach, that's building relationships, that's creating buy-in, that's an incredibly important and wildly effective piece to, to making treatment more sustainable for folks, therefore helping people find recovery that's more sustainable for them. Thank you.
So another key piece to the work we've been doing is really thinking about when these funds come in and we have these strategies that are aligned with North Carolina's Exhibit A, what are we going to do to ensure that we're making an impact on a community or on populations? And that's where measurement evaluation and alignment for strategies comes in. These are three strategies for the evaluation. The first I highlight is alignment, and we spoke about that, the strategies we've developed as a work group actually align directly with the sample strategies from the state provided in Exhibit A. Once we have these strategies, we work together and with stakeholders to identify metrics or measures and key outcome indicators. Those are the outcomes we expect to see success in the population. And we actually have already created a draft recommended list of measures. However, we understand that as the epidemic evolves, we may need to actually revisit those metrics and continue the conversations and engaging stakeholders. And lastly, we will, the dashboard, we will create a full comprehensive evaluation plan for each of the strategies we've developed so that we can collect valid, reliable data and present it through dashboards and provide data visualization and continue tracking over time. Thank you.
I'm going to go back first and, and go over these strategies one more time, and, and then I'm going to have our ask, which is not to endorse any particular program, any particular agency or organization, but really is to endorse these strategies that everyone has worked for these last few months on coming to some consolidated recommendation. And it was an anonymous, anonymous, it was unanimous recommendation from the entire group. They spent a lot of time sharing their own experiences and opinions. But as you can see, that we kind of categorized these in three buckets, expanding and increasing existing efforts, which would include increasing naloxone and syringe services in the community, expanding treatment and recovery resources, increasing economic support for individuals via expanded transportation options, and low or no-cost treatment options, expanding peer support and substance use care coordination resources. And then the second bucket, creating new strategies. So these are a couple of things that, these aren't things that exist currently in this community. So support the creation of drug courts. We currently have a DUI specialty court, but that's the only specialty court we have. And so there was a lot of support around creating more treatment courts in our system for children and families, developing and implementing a community engagement and substance use disorder-related professional development strategy. And then our third bucket, developing collaborative support structure. And that's really bringing folks together. You heard a couple of comments about gaps and collaboration. There really hasn't been a concerted effort for getting all the people around the table who are working in this space and making sure that we're, you know, not creating those gaps or we're not also working on it cross purposes when we know that there really isn't one solution. We need a menu of options and we want to use these dollars effectively to do what's right for the community. So this, again, just kind of shows you the dollars that we're talking about, and I said you can basically double that. The other thing that we would recommend as a group is that, and this is really some information that we heard from some other counties and some of the professionals who work in this space, is that we would like to make these initial funding recommendations when they come to you based on a three-year approach. So give in folks an investment in their program or the service that would be provided for at least three years so that we can see what the data tells us long-term. This is not a one-and-done scenario, and with the 18-year runway that we have, we think that that, that makes a lot of sense. We would anticipate having at least a semi-annual review by a collaborative group who would meet and work to evaluate progress with some county staff support. We would refine these plans throughout the three-year period, and I would anticipate that initially that group would have to meet much more regularly so that we get the dashboard put together and put together the resources that are needed to bring this forward. Many of this work group have agreed that they want to continue this work in this space. So again, what we're asking you to do are endorse those seven recommendations, direct staff to come back in the next 60 days, that staff is me, and I'll find some other people to bring him back with me at the next time, to engage with others in the community, to create plans for how these recommendations could be addressed. We know that there are services in the community. There's Cameron's House of Hope, there's Ground 40, there's Bridge to Recovery, there's Kevin's Program. There are programs that exist that we think would make sense to make some investment in those programs, but to flesh those out, the needs that they have and align those in a way that, that you could endorse those from a contractual relationship going forward. And to bring high-level plans for expectations and performance measures back to the board. Additionally, I would add that with treatment courts in particular, since that's something that we don't currently do, I'll need to continue to have some conversation with the judges and with Judge Hucks and, and staff about how we would suggest a timeline for implementation. That's not something that we could just say, we want to do that tomorrow, and it would happen. So we want to bring you back some reasonable expectations for that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm also happy to have any of these folks in the audience answer any questions that you might have.
You might have any questions? Mr. Chairman.
Could you go back to the strategy summary, that strategies page? Yes. Number three, increase economic support via expanded transportation options and low, no-cost treatment options. The economic support via expanded transportation options, I know this is just strategy level at this point, but would some of this funding be available for that, that kind of thing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, so what we would be looking at is building out programs and services that align with all of these strategies.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Rick, Brian Hemms.
So on one of the previous slides, when we were talking about metrics, it was mentioned that, that our stakeholders were used to develop the metrics that we were intending to use in the dashboard. My question is, what, who were the stakeholders that were collaborated with?
It was all these folks, the 25 people that you had listed, and many of them are here tonight. They worked to identify state, the measures, and you should have those in your agenda package that was sent to you, a full report with all of those strategies and the appendix. But I can share those with you again if you'd, if you'd like.
It was also said that we plan to address gaps in the community. So what specifically are we intending to do there? Are we intended to support the services that we have in the county like Ground 40? Can you expand a little bit further on that?
Yeah, I think that those will definitely be things, I think one of the big pieces of that is just having an opportunity for all the folks who work in this space to spend more time in a collaborative manner like we've done over the last few months, to talk about the issues that they're seeing, to talk about the gaps that they think exist. Like, I mean, that's where some of these came from. Number three is a prime example, that folks don't have opportunities for low or no-cost treatment options. They don't have opportunities for transportation all the time, the things that it takes to get somebody in treatment that's going to work. So really having those discussions and sharing information and making sure that we're all, you know, not working in silos and in isolation, but really working in a collaborative manner.
And I would just say that, you know, it's been my experience that long-term support is, is something that's critical for treatment of addiction. So I mean, I, I'm a proponent for long-term support. I do have concerns, and I'll just say this, I do have concerns with the number one here, increasing naloxone, which is also called Narcan, and syringe service access. If you look at other parts of the country, this has been an issue. It's been an issue where people can acquire this without prescription, and it's been abused. I, I would say that we need to be careful with that. My, my concern also extends to, you know, the fact that we are looking at investing money with something like this. However, we have also other needs in our community such as diabetic supplies, insulin. You know, so you're going to hear the argument from the people of our county that they're going to say essentially that, hey, you know, we can spend on recovering for addiction, but we can't help other folks to have similar needs for medication. So, thank you.
I would just like to thank everyone that was on this committee and the time, your personal time outside of your full-time responsibilities. I just want to thank everyone that's here tonight that worked on this. And I definitely will be endorsing to move this forward, and I'll ask the Chair, I'm not sure if you want a motion for us to vote on allowing staff to move forward, to put together, you know, what they're going to do in the next 60 days, or if you're, if you want to vote, or just everyone's input on if they're just endorsing.
What is the ask, Michelle?
I, I would like a vote to endorse the recommendations and, and take this direction to staff.
Okay. All right, I've got a couple of questions too. The Narcan, that's what is the, the?
Narcan.
That's what it is, Narcan?
Yes.
Okay, and that, you know, there is an argument like, like Commissioner Ryanham said about, you know, people that are diabetic, but we do have programs, you know, for people with diabetes and, and, you know, programs where they can get some medications. You know, I guess this would be for, to be sent home with people who have known problems, not people just, it's not like EpiPens, right? We're not sending them out like EpiPens, just you might have one one day and you're going to get one correct.
Right, I mean, they're, they're offered in multiple places. I mean, one of our bigger users is law enforcement. The sheriff's office has them in all their cars. Police departments have them in their cars. I mean, you can see what EMS, how often EMS is using them. One point, I think it was 1.4 or 5 doses per call that suspected drug overdose.
And I kind of see a dual-pronged approach here. You know, taking the people that are in their twenties and maybe early thirties, the people that are suffering a current addiction now, and then those people before they get addicted, the young children in schools that are, that were trying to stop this from both ends. We don't want to stop this here after it's gotten that far, because that's when, you, you know, one thing I see and I, I hear horror stories, and if your family hasn't been touched by this, you're lucky, and, and you may not know about it. And you may get touched by it soon, because I know many families of all income levels are touched by this problem. But I see, I see families, and these are people that I know and friends of mine, they, they just, it looks, they look at marijuana like it's no big deal. And we watch it on television, and we watch programs about where, you know, this state's in, you know, legalized, that state's legalized, and it starts somewhere. So I think when we, when our kids are watching television saying, oh, this is cool, I can do this, I can eat brownies with pot in them or whatever, then they start looking, well, what's in the medicine cabinet? You know, it's hard to get pot, but it's easy to get mom and dad's medicine, pain medications. And, you know, we've explained to our children how important it is to stay away from pain medications. And being in the gun industry, you know, state law says that if you store your firearm in a way that a child can have access to it, and they take that firearm and they injure themselves or somebody else with it, if they rob a store with it, if they display it in a careless, angry or threatening manner, that the parent can be charged with a first-class misdemeanor. You know, they can be charged with some serious crimes. And, you know, our storage methods probably should be as equal for this drug, these drugs, as they are for firearms. And so maybe going to the state with our legislative goals of, you know, what's, you know, maybe the DA can explain this. Is there anything now currently where a parent can be charged for having their medications stored improperly?
Yes, sir, it is very fact-specific, but there is, there is a way that a parent can be charged if they left dangerous drugs in easy access to children, or access to children. They could be, they could be charged with child abuse.
Can you come up here and say it? Because I, I apologize, I'm bad, I'm the worst in the world with this microphone, so just want to make sure the people at home can hear this.
The answer is yes. It's very fact-specific, but yes, a parent could be charged under one of the prongs of the criminal statutes involving child abuse for leaving drugs where they can be gotten to by the child, and the child hurts themselves or takes the, takes the, takes drugs. But it's very fact-specific, but it can be done, and it has been done.
Have we charged anybody with this that you can remember?
Got one charged right now.
Got one charged right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I think you don't want to say make an example, but you do, that, you know, I think we have a police officer, maybe from another county, that was charged with the firearm-related thing in the county when a child leached in a sock drawer and shot, shot themselves. So again, these, these drugs are like loaded guns. I mean, it's, you know, you, you, you know, you can kill yourself. You know, we, like I said, we've had people in, that I know, rich to poor, it doesn't matter. But the fact that, you know, that these rich to poor, it doesn't matter. But the fact that, you know, that these kids are getting these drugs, you know, we, it's a societal thing, like I said, with the, when you're watching television, you see CBD oil, you know, I've even had family grow the CBD oil stuff. I mean, so, I think that we just look at things now as escape. I've got a family I'm talking to that, you know, they've got a child that went through a trauma, you know, they've got two children that went through a trauma, but it's just hard to explain to the parent and the grandparents, you know, sometimes that, "Hey, this is, this is not, this is not, this is not funny," and everybody doesn't do it, and they don't think it's funny, and they're aggravated by what they're doing. But one thing leads to the next, you know, whereas alcohol, you know, smaller drugs leads to something else. And so, yeah, I'm in support of what you're talking about. I think that we need to look at it from a law enforcement perspective. Can any of this funding be used for officers in the schools, drug-specific officers, maybe, that can, that can, you know, go through, do more sweeps or whatever we can, you know, we just got to show people it's serious. And if the kid's parents giving it to them, or providing it for them, or allowing them easy access to it, that's the worst message to send, that it's no big deal. And, but no, thank all of you for your work on this, and I know, I know, I hope it's rewarding to, I hope that we come to some conclusions on this, but, you know, it's something that we've got to go from both ends. We've got to go from the young children all the way up to the older people that are overdosing in their vehicles and, you know, their kids are watching. So, yeah, I'm in support of the motion, and any discussion on the motion?
I have a couple of comments, and I'm going to offer a motion. One of the biggest things that stands out to me is we clearly have an issue along the 485 corridor with Mecklenburg and along the Highway 74 corridor, and, you know, there's always the saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Well, we've been hearing from our sheriff for years that there's a problem, and the unintended consequences are our children. And so, I would like to make a motion that we accept the recommendations brought to us tonight from this committee, and give them the time that they need, the 60 days they need to put together next steps and a plan to come back to us with more information.
Any discussion on the motion? And I don't believe we had a prior motion. Right, she was asking a question. Yep, yep. So, we've got a motion on the floor, no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the 23054, appointment law firm as county attorney. Recognize Brian Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, actually, there are three items associated with this, and I'm not going to talk about them all together, but in the end, we do need action on each one individually, but they're related, so I'm going to talk about them as a whole. So, the county board has had a contractual arrangement with Perry Bundy, Pliler, and Long for a number of years. They have served as the firm for the county attorney, and then Richard Long is currently the primary contact for that. But that firm has had a number of individuals who've served in the role as primary contact for county attorney, Ligon Bundy at one point in time, and Don Perry. So, the issue here is, well, not issue, but what the matter here is, is that the firm has changed names, and because the contractual arrangement was actually with Perry Bundy, Pliler, and Long, the contract itself needs to be modified because the name is changing of the firm. And so, we have several actions here. One has to do with appointment of the new, the change in the law firm's name, which is Pliler, Long, and Corrigliano. I said it somewhat correctly, as the county's, county attorney, and again, Richard would still serve as the primary contact with that. The next item would be that then you would authorize the manager to negotiate and approve a contract for legal services, and essentially, it's the same contract. Nothing really is changing other than the name of the firm, and those terms that we would change, as long as the board is satisfied with that. And then the last item, which the board probably may not be aware of, is we have a separate contractual arrangement for work that Richard's firm does for our Department of Social Services, and so, one of his partners and several of the staff members serve in a legal role for us for that, and that's a separate arrangement that we would also need to continue, again, under that new law firm's name. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, but that's the actions that we're looking for, three separate things. They all have some relation, but it's an appointment of the firm, then the contract itself for the legal services for the county attorney, and then the contract for the legal services for social services.
Any questions? And you might can help me with this, Richard. The, so, right now, we're paying Perry Bundy, Pliler, and Long, or who are we paying?
Perry Bundy, Pliler, and Long.
Okay, so, now Perry was, now Don Perry was Perry, but is there another Perry in there now?
No.
And then, and then Ligon retired.
Ligon retired.
So, we, but we were able to pay, you know, is this a question of, because I understand it's how you get paid, right?
Yes.
And there was no problem with, like, Don being deceased or anything with getting paid?
Yes, sir. The law firm name never changed.
Okay.
From Don Perry, Perry, it's been Perry, Pliler, and Long since 1995.
Right, right.
So, when we added a new partner, we changed the name of the law firm, but it has a new taxpayer ID.
I got you. So, nothing changed with those, and now the new, the new partner in the firm, will he be servicing Union County as well, or would just you be servicing?
Anybody in my firm can do work on behalf of the county. I'm the primary contact, but throughout the years, many people in my law firm have done different tasks for the county.
Right. One, one thing, and I've been with Perry, I've been with Bundy, and I've been with Long, and, you know, Ms. Pliler's been also in the firm. I don't know the new guy. So, what I thought about this when I saw this was that maybe we go through the process that we went through when Ligon Bundy left us, is that we did an interview process, and you were the most qualified, according to the board, to handle that because of your experience and your firm's experience with the county. Similar to what we did with the manager, is that the board asked questions of potential attorneys, and again, found you to be the one that was most qualified. So, no, absolutely no disparaging thing to you, but shouldn't we go through that process maybe again, just, and maybe even meet with your new partner as part of the potential group? You know, that's one of the concerns that I had, and maybe do it as a board, to see what, where we could go with this. And again, no, no slight to your firm, as you have been the county attorneys for quite some time, but that maybe we should put out an RFQ. What's staff's feelings on that?
I will answer regarding the DSS work. I've shared this with you already. I believe that what we've set up currently for our DSS structure, we have hired two internal attorneys with the expectation that over time, we're going to take that in-house. Delian's not going to work forever, and so, we've really set ourselves up to have a plan for how that would work long-term. I personally am not, don't think it's in the county's best interest to look at how we could be served differently from an external attorney in that case, because the work that she does is pretty important to how we keep our child welfare cases going. So, I would answer, that's how I would answer on the DSS side. I think staying with that contract is really in the best interest of the organization at this point.
Right, and as, and as the county, I don't think we ever, I don't know that we ever even interviewed her with any county position. So, again, the intention would be that Richard Long would be our board attorney, and then, just like it was with Mr. Bundy, when he, when he retired, we kept, we still had the, opened it up for other attorneys in the county and elsewhere to do that. So, how do we, how do we retain Mr. Long, and then yet maybe put out an RFQ, similar to what we're doing with the county manager's contract?
Brian, do you, I mean, I'll answer it. I think that if that's the direction that you give us, then we'll go back and work with procurement to put out an RFQ. I guess we would have to enter into a short-term arrangement with Richard's firm, Jason?
Yes, go ahead, Jason.
At the moment, the two things you can do to continue the relationship with the law firm and Mr. Long are to go through the requested items in the agenda, which is one, to appoint the new-named law firm. It's like a new legal person, and then, secondly, to engage in that contract. The contract itself is terminable at will, and of course, the county attorney, as does the county manager, serves at the pleasure of the board. So, by engaging in those two actions, you're simply continuing the status quo until such time as you are able to evaluate where you want to be.
Any questions, senior board members?
I have one quick question. So, Mr. Long is our board attorney. Is he also the same one from his firm that works with DSS? Or do you only use the internal attorneys at this point?
No, we use Delian Pliler, we actually use several attorneys from Richard's firm, Delian, Lisa Beeman, and then Ashley McBride does some work for us also on the adult, so it's adult protective services and child protective services. So, based on volume and just logistics of how we have to run that, that takes more attorneys. We also have two staff attorneys that are new to us, so we're starting to add them into the mix and how that works with how the court structure works. So, that's how that piece of the business is managed.
So, his firm is the one for your external?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Legal, okay.
And it's a separate contract, though?
Oh, a separate, from the board attorney?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do, do we need to do something then with theirs as well?
It's on your agenda. It's the third one, I think.
Yep.
So, we would be approving the name change for all three?
Yes.
Okay. For both the?
Yes, for both of those contracts.
And it would be under the new name? Any, Richard Long?
Yeah, and I'd like to make a motion. We appoint the law firm of Pliler, Long, and Corrigliano LLP as county attorney effective January 1, 2023.
And would you, would you add a friendly amendment to that, that we put out an RFQ?
No.
Okay.
That's my motion.
All right. Then, after we vote on this, as another item I'd put out, I'm going to make a motion that we put out RFQ, just the same as we did when Mr. Long's partner left and retired from the firm, just out of fairness. So, I support the motion. I think, I think we go through the contract. We, I know Mr. Long's got several things as far as condemnations, other issues that are going on, exactly what you're saying. When's your timeframe ongoing internal with the DSS?
It's not like a hard and fast date. I mean, it's going to happen over time, probably the next few years, is how long that will, will take to fully take all of that work in-house.
Okay, all right. All right. The motion is to change the contract name from Perry Bundy, Pliler, and Long to?
Pliler, Long, and Corrigliano.
Yep, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Okay, now, as part of this, I'd like to make a motion that we do put out an RFQ request for qualifications, just as we did before with Mr. Long's partner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Three to two. Okay. So, you took us, that all took us through where?
So, yeah, so you still have 23055, which is the contract, because as Jason stated, we still need to be in those discussions for that purpose with the current firm, and we'll also need to do 23056, and that is, again, authorize the agreement for legal services for social services. So, those two items, we still need action.
And we didn't include those either one?
No, that's correct. We did not.
The authorization, would anybody like to make a motion on the authorization for agreement for legal services as county attorney?
I will. Authorize the interim county manager to negotiate and approve a agreement with Perry, Pliler, Long, and Corrigliano LLP for engagement of legal services, county attorney, in a form substantially consistent with the attached agreement.
All right. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right. Next, we have this authorization for agreement for legal services for social services. Anybody like to make a motion on that? Yes.
I move that we authorize the interim county manager to negotiate and approve an agreement with Pliler, Long, and Corrigliano LLP for the engagement of legal services for the Division of Social Services in a form substantially consistent with the attached agreement.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? I have a question. So, when we enter into those contracts, because I see a difference here, I see the county is, board's attorney is hired at will, but this attorney is hired by contract for a period of time?
Jason, is it, does it have a time certain?
The DSS agreement that you have in your materials lays out a one-year agreement. However, that agreement is terminable with, I believe it's 30 days notice by, at will, by either party. There are some provisions for transitioning of documents and cases and that sort of thing in there, but even though it's a term of a year that is renewed annually, there is a provision for at-will termination of the agreement by either party.
So, the question here would be, is that year from July to July, or is it from December to, you know, how does that run, and are we, are we changing that to now being, to February? Is the year going to be from February to February, or is it?
I believe all the agreements are effective January 1 of 2023, because that's the date when the new firm was formed and began doing business.
Okay, so, we're not, we're not under any contract with her, Ms. Pliler now, because?
We're under a contract with Ms. Pliler and the firm of Perry Bundy, Pliler, and Long LLP. That firm as an entity, as I understand it, still exists, although it's not doing business. So, Delian is doing work for the county under that agreement, but that agreement is also terminable at will, and effectively, that's, we're just amending that agreement to substitute the new name.
Okay, so she did not have a contract till July. She has a contract?
She had a contract that, I guess it was evergreen, really, the way it was original, or how we, the one we're amending at this point, or replacing.
Yeah, I believe it automatically renewed, to Ms. Lancaster's point. It was an evergreen contract that was, has been in place for a number of years, I believe.
But it's not renewed in the, it's renewed in January, not during the budget cycle?
So, so it was evergreen. It went, unless we decided to terminate, it was going to continue, it just continued forever.
Okay.
This actually puts, puts it in a little different light, that it has that annual component that would be calendar year, with the expectation that either party could terminate that with 30 days' notice, and with some transfer of documents being expected. And that's obviously a little different line of work that we're involved in there.
Any penalty?
No, we, we just pay what the contract rate is for their, for their services on a monthly basis.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? And the motion is, remind me, Commissioner Williams?
To authorize the interim county manager to negotiate and approve an agreement with Pliler, Long, and Corrigliano for the engagement of legal services for the DSS in a form substantially consistent with the attached agreement.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Aye. Any opposed? None. All right, so that brings us to 23041, rezoning case 2022-005, Stonebridge enclave.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's probably one of your easier actions. This was presented to you last month. And as a reminder, this is the site plan. This is effectively a part of the Stonebridge Golf Course subdivision south of Mineral Springs. And just asking you to approve a consistency statement to support your decision last month to deny this rezoning.
Okay. Any motions or discussion?
Motion, the board voted to deny this request, and it's January 7th, meeting 2023. Meeting, the appropriate consistency statement needs to be adopted by the board.
And as we're talking, we're passing that down. Jason, that's, is that? Does he need to read it word for word, or is that substantial?
I think it would be helpful, yes.
Sorry, Commissioner Pritchard, it's coming.
You can read it word for word. That's fine, to adopt the consistency statement that pairs with the action that you're taking.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? And the motion is to deny, correct?
Yes, deny.
No discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye? Aye. Any opposed? None. Next, we have the 2022 Popular Annual Financial Report. We don't know if it's popular or not, Beverly. It depends.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Jason made a point. Can I clarify the motion for?
Yes, please.
Okay. I, rezoning position CZ 2022-005, to the zoning property here on Tax Matt at parcel 09384018E in Monroe Township from RA 40 to RV 4, and adopt the consistency station, consistency statement in recent event elections. You said, or deny.
Okay. And again, no questions or comments? And motion to deny with the consistency statement, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? None. All right, sorry, Beverly.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman, Manager Matthews. Tonight, I want to present to you our Popular Annual Financial Report. As you're aware, a few months back, we presented to you our annual financial report, which is a very large document, very hard to read through for your general public. So the General, I mean, excuse me, Government Finance Officers Association, one of their best practices is that they encourage governments to supplement that report with a much simpler, popular report. That's designated to assist those who need or desire a less complicated report to review the government's financial activities for the year. As you're aware, when we do our CAFR, or ACFR, excuse me, now we have to call it ACFR, it's presented with a generally accounted excepting principles, which is very broad and the data is very, at a high level of detail. While this report's necessary for you all to understand our financial position to make decisions, sometimes it discourages your general population to read through your financial documents for transparency purposes. So we, Union County, have decided to prepare the Popular Annual Financial Report, what we refer to as a PAFR annually, as a better way to select certain financial data for a very broad audience. The data from the PAFR is all executed from our financial report. I'm not gonna go through this document one page at a time. But I did want to highlight some of the things that are in this report for you all and for our general public. This report is also available online and will be shared through social media network with the help of Public Communications Team in the near future. So one of the things that is highlighted in here is some data for the county that we pull out of our CAFR that is very educational for those that may not read through the entire CAFR, but want to get major highlights about our data points, which include here, as you can see, our population, our unemployment rate, the number of schools that we serve, and our principal employers and largest taxpayers, just to name a few of the data that's highlighted in this report. The report also includes our award-winning departments through the year, and we try to summarize those for the general public in one area. This report also goes over each area of fiscal control that we monitor throughout the year and gives the definitions of each one of those for the general population to understand what each one of those mean. This highlights the net position of the county overall. It gives a broad description of what is included in net position, what our total net position is for our government-wide, our business-type activities, which is our enterprise funds for water, sewer, solid waste, and the total for the county. This also highlights our fund balance for the county, what percentage is made up of which category, and what each one of those categories mean. This also reports on our revenues, what percentage is received from what source. I mean, it gives a general overview of percentage and total operating revenues for all of our business-type activities, as you can see at the bottom, for the past three years in comparison. We also list our expenses by category. This is the functions of each of our expenses. And you can see the percentage there, with education being our largest expense down, and the second-largest expense being public safety. Again, highlighting at the bottom the expenditures for our business-type activities for the past three years as well. The report also gives a very high-level overview of the county's debt by type, the outstanding by the functionality, as well as for each function, the outstanding of debt by each debt issuance type. Total outstanding principal at the end of June 30th was around $788 million. This again gives the general fund debt alone, not total county debt, but the general fund debt alone by category, as well as shows our debt service as a percentage of expenditures. And this lists our enterprise debt, comparing it from the prior years to where we are at today, as well as what capital project, major capital projects were funded with the debt that's outstanding. We also list our capital improvement program, the major programs that are going on for our general capital fund, as well as the water fund and solid waste. And we don't list each individual project, because there are numerous projects, as you are aware, that would have to be included. And then we look forward, going forward for our capital improvement plans and what we are currently expecting to be open within the next fiscal year or there closely after. That's the major highlights of the reports. I'd be glad to take any questions that you have. But it is recommended that you actually accept this report as presented tonight, please.
Commissioner Roush?
Yes. Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
In your expenses, you talked about 47% being schools. Does that include their debt, or is the debt separate?
The debt service is separate. 37% is for education. That includes schools and South Peamont Community College as well. The debt is separate. That expense for overall expenses is 16% of all general funds added together.
Okay.
And this is the way that the report is to be presented, based on GFOA recommendations.
Any other questions? The, when we get ready to go into the budget again, you know, for this year, we're already started in that process, you know, we go through a simple, well, we go through a more complicated version of everything. The, what I would like to see in this process is a very clear understanding of what we took in last year versus what we spent. You know, for example, you know, us going through it, like you said, doing a more, I guess, you know, a cleaner version for the people at home, is seeing how much we took in more from one year to the next, how much we spent one year to the next, and very clear in that. So one of these presentations, you know, in the future, I know we have to wait until the end of the year to get accurate numbers.
Right.
But one page of that would be really important for the people to see just where we're at.
So are you asking for that during your budget presentations, or at year-end when we do our financial report presentation?
Just as we go through, I know we'll go through several between here and there. So if we can have, like, you know, what we project, just very clear, one page.
You should be receiving projections, I believe, at the February 20th meeting from Blake, the budget manager.
Yeah, so if we could have Blake, one page, you know, one line, not 30 lines on one page. Because it gets jumbled up a little bit in what we're doing. Exactly, like if I sit down and at my business, I look at my taxes, what did I make last year versus what I made this year? Are we going up? Are we going down? Did I spend more last year than this year? Something very simple on one page, separate, and then all the complicated stuff. You have a question?
Beverly, I just have another comment about education. I'm reading the second paragraph. I think it must be page 11 under General Fund, and it shows education at 37%. The second paragraph, 41,200 students. That is only the enrollment, I believe, for Union County Public Schools. So you're not, we need to get the enrollment for all charter schools. And I'm sure the Mrs. McLam can tell you how many students from Union County she is sending out to however many charter schools. So Union County dollars are for charter schools, Union County Public Schools, and SPCC. So you may need to correct the number of students and everything in that paragraph.
Okay, we do receive our data from Ms. McLam.
Yes, so I just want to make sure that we include charter schools, because local dollars and state dollars are going to them as well. And I don't believe that's the correct number, so I just want to point that out.
For us, for Union County, we list for our education partners who we pay directly. So you're aware, we do not pay charter schools directly. The schools pay them out of their allotment for what we pay to them directly.
I understand that, and thank you for that clarification. But it need, that number is not correct. So I'll get the number for you. How about that?
Okay.
So what, so when the charter schools, they get their money from the state and the federal government, and they get local tax dollars as well from the county. So, you know, with her saying, if there's 46,000 kids that are out there being educated, it's important for that number, because we do have a lot of people that say, you know, I don't have kids that are in school. We hear that from time to time. And again, it's, you know, a lot of people have, people, you know, a lot of people don't have something that somebody else does have. You know, some people never have an ambulance show up at their house. Some people never have a police officer, but they're there if they need them. They're there if they have a grandchild move in with them. They're there, you know, for other reasons. But, and even the charter private schools. Now, the private schools are not, they don't get any local funding at all. I'm probably pretty sure they don't get, they don't get right now state or federal funding either, I would think. But if we have 46,000 kids that are being educated, which could be close to the number.
With Union County tax dollars, I think it's important. And you are correct, the Union County tax dollars flow through the public school system. But I just want to make sure that we are transparent, that it's not the 41,200 students. Local tax dollars are going to significantly more than that. So I'll be happy to get that number for you.
Because people looking at this would say, how much are we paying per pupil? And they might be missing some.
The average person has no idea that their charter school payments are coming through the public school. And it's all Union County tax dollars, so I think it's important.
Do, when's this time sensitive?
Well, this has already been submitted to GFOA.
So you don't need a motion or anything then?
I just need you to accept it as presented, based on GFOA best practices, yes.
How about looking at those numbers on school, and we'll do it at the next one? Does that sound okay?
And just to be transparent, we've always presented this in the way that the data's been sent to us for decades from Union County Public Schools. It's the same data we've used for years.
So are we capturing every child that's being educated with Union County?
We are reaching out to the schools to ask them to send us their daily population or their ADM counts. And that's the information we've used for decades.
So we haven't used, for decades, we haven't used Union Academy or Union Day?
I will verify what we are receiving from them. And I can't answer that right off the top of my head. Because we get a total. We don't get it broken down by types of schools.
Well, I know we send the budget presentation each May, how many are charter and how many are public. So I know the number exists, and I don't know why that, why they would not send you the charter plus public school. But I think it's an extremely easy number to obtain.
Yes, and one thing that might be helpful to this is, Beverly indicated, this has already been provided to GFOA as part of the,
Sorry, in our CAFR.
How the annual financials go. But as we're going into budget, I have already asked Beverly and Blake, actually, to look at how we denote charter schools in particular, and how we can do that in a more transparent way. So when you see next year's budget, hopefully it aligns with what you're talking about. So we've heard that. That's how we're working on next year's, to give you more clarification on where those charter schools, what they're funding exactly. So we'll break that out a little bit differently as you start to see the budget process roll out.
You know, this has been a great conversation. I think a lot of people are gonna learn new information through this. It's just when I saw the 41,200 number, I knew that that is not, we fund significantly more Union County students than that, and I would like to get that number.
Yeah, we will be cognizant of that going forward and make those changes and how we present it.
Now, one other thing, the ones that we fund out of, how do we do out-of-county students? So if a student comes from Mecklenburg to Union to do a charter school student?
Paid by Mecklenburg.
By Mecklenburg.
At Mecklenburg rates or Union County rates?
It's the county of residence. So if it's a Mecklenburg County resident that goes to any other charter school outside of Mecklenburg, CMS is paying that charter school bill. UCS is paying for Union County residents.
We have students that live in Union County and go to a charter school in Mecklenburg. They might even go to South Carolina, or Ranson, or Stanley, or, I mean, they're, the payments could be around 30 different charter schools that are being dispersed out of the public school.
But that's absolutely a number that schools can give us, is that how many come to Union County?
Yeah, they have to do it monthly, right.
They have it, and we'll get that for you.
To be clear, and just for a point of clarification, the fact that the school system makes the payment to the charters, that is according to state statute. Is that correct? Can, Jason, can you weigh in on that?
That is, that is correct. That's the way the state statutes lay it out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? So, do we have a motion on the floor on this?
I make a motion that we approve the budget that has been sent to us tonight with the friendly amendment that we'll correct that number with you.
Not the budget, Popular Annual Financial Report, please. There you go. Yes, thank you.
We might hold it.
Popular.
So, and again, that's gonna be checked and fixed in the future, correct?
In the future.
All right, thank you.
I would just like to say thank you to the Public Communications Team. They helped us put this document together in a very easy-to-read format, and they will also be helping us share it with the public for viewing. So thank you to Liz's team for their help. Thank you.
And be clear, this is last year's budget, not this year's budget.
Right, 22.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye? Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, we've done the opioid work. This is not a separate item. This is the one we'll move, correct? Next, we have 23049, 2023 Legislative Agenda, Chair Lancaster.
We're gonna get to talk about that again, too, and I didn't even. We're going to get to talk about that again too and I didn't even set it up that way. But you'll see, one of our legislative items is regarding charter schools as well. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I am here to present the 2023 Legislative Agenda. So just to go through a couple things, just a couple of reminders for folks. We do have a lobbyist who represents our interests in Raleigh, Daniel Baum, with Navigator LLC. He has represented us for a little more than seven years, does a great job. I think our delegation would attest to that and the work that he does on our behalf, being there every day at the legislature. This session that is currently in place is the long session. So typically, we anticipate a longer session, they have to set their biennial budget. So as the name indicates, the timelines are a little different for this session and the expectation that we may have for the things that we can propose to the legislature and hopefully get passed that we think are in our best interest as an organization or as a community. And so I provided these to you a few weeks ago. These are the guiding principles that we have used for several years, really for a couple of reasons. Particularly when the session starts to wind down, you know, there are thousands of bills that are introduced every session. But as it gets closer to time to leave, lots of things get thrown out, you know, very rapidly. And so after the first year, I think, of working with Daniel, we decided that it really helps if we have some guiding principles that we can look at. So if he sees something or if a delegation member sees something and he calls me at eight o'clock at night, we can say pretty quickly, well, no, that doesn't align with where Union County is, or yes, it does. Now, that wouldn't apply to anything that is controversy or has controversial aspects. We would bring those to the board to vet those, but there are certain things that we want to look at and particularly make sure that we support legislative efforts that protect and/or enhance our local government revenues and/or increase any local funding flexibility that we may have. So we look for flexibility and anything that gives us potentially enhanced revenues, if that's possible. We also oppose unfunded mandates and any initiatives that fail to fully fund services shifted to the county. So our delegation is pretty aware of usually the way that we'll come down on certain things if they don't align with those two principles that we have. So I'm going to go through the items that I have collected essentially from staff and then from a few commissioners also gave me feedback on items you would like to see. And then I have a new item that's fresh that I want to get your input because it doesn't exactly align with our guiding principles and I'll explain that to you. Some of these are simply placeholders, items that we're gathering more information. So we're not sure if we are going to ask for something, but we want to be able to present this to the delegation and let them know that these are topics that we're looking at that are of importance. Some of them actually, they've called me about as well. So we have a fairly open line of communication about the things that we're looking at. And so the first one is this county line issue, which was mentioned earlier tonight, that the board has heard. Again, we're not sure we're asking for something on this area, this is really just to keep this out there if we decide that we do need a legislative change or a legislative fix. Van and his staff are doing a little more due diligence. It's going to take probably the next three to four weeks along with GIS to really look at specific parcel data and determine what kind of issues we may have that we want to have resolved at the state level.
Michelle, can I stop you right here?
Uh huh.
This issue's of extreme importance. We heard one of our speakers tonight, a lot of people are in limbo and concerned about this on what our position is and I think the confusion with where Mecklenburg is or where Union County, the boards are. I talked to Jason Kay about maybe doing a resolution and I don't know maybe how soon that could be prepared, but I think the board needs to maybe take some action on that, to ask him to do that. So if you don't mind me making a motion right now on this issue, I would make the motion that we ask the attorney to draft a resolution requesting that all assumed lines, all assumed property lines, all assumed properties in Union County, including kids in our school system, they're attending our school system, be maintained and that we would draft that to send to the state.
Yeah, I think we could bring that back at the next board meeting.
Bring that back at the next board meeting.
Yep, absolutely.
Any discussion on that motion?
I would just say that I'm in support of that motion. You know, I know that we have received numerous emails, phone calls regarding this issue. I have answered every single email that I've received. You know, my heart goes out to the folks that are impacted by this. This is not a decision that's based on tax dollars. This is a decision that's based on families, so I'll be in support of that.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? None.
Thank you very much, yes, no problem at all, stop me on any of them. The next one is not quite as probably exciting to anybody except for the county staff. Towing slash booting vehicles that are improperly parked on county property. This is just an area where we don't have specific language that would give us authority to boot vehicles that are in violation of our parking rules on our property or leased property that the county holds. So that's something we'll be looking at. The next one has the potential to be probably a little more robust. Local or regional medical examiner services. I think all of you are aware that in the last year, Mecklenburg stopped doing the county's medical examiner services that they had done for quite some time in a regional capacity, ours and Cabarrus. And so we've had a couple of issues that we've had to work through because bodies have to be taken to Raleigh. It becomes a much more cumbersome and potentially problematic process. So what we'll probably be looking at here is some language that would allow for a local or regional medical examiner service. This is one where we're going to align our ask with Cabarrus County so that we're asking for a similar thing, that we just want this to stay at the forefront. The delegation is aware that this is an issue for us and we want to limit any problematic areas that we have here. The next one, again, is, has the potential to be fairly robust, is around water and sewer. I simply put a placeholder around system development fees. I'm not exactly sure what, if anything, we might ask for in terms of looking to open up that legislation. But I think this, as we talk to our delegation and at the end, I'll share with you an opportunity for us to have a legislative breakfast with our delegation members. I wanted to make sure that they knew this was something that we were looking at. The second bullet point there really aligns with what the Union County Chamber has put forward as an item to seek flexibility that allows the utility to implement a method of allocation that prioritizes industrial and commercial development. So those may be, those may go hand in glove, that's, you know, these are things that we're going to continue to tweak as we have conversation with you, as you have conversations with the delegation and I think community members about what the expectations are going forward with the SDFs and our allocation process and how the law impacts that. The next one is one that we talked about with you earlier, well testing. This is one where we're going to work on some, seeking some clarifying language regarding potable water because that obviously has raised some questions. We think that there may be some opportunity for the legislature to give us some more direct guidance on what exactly it is they're looking for in terms of how we follow code. Solid Waste, this came from our Solid Waste Director regarding scrap tire disposal. So this is a very specific ask to restore or allocate funds to the North Carolina Scrap Tire Program sufficient to cover the disposal costs incurred by counties for the proper disposal of scrap tires. So we have to take scrap tires currently, but we don't get enough of a revenue source to cover the cost that we incur in doing that service. The next one is regarding Medicaid expansion. We all believe that Medicaid expansion is probably going to happen during this session and estimates indicate that Union County DSS will require ten additional staff based on the 21% increase or approximately 10,000 new eligible Medicaid recipients in the county. And so this really aligns with that, no unfunded mandates. If they're going to expand and we have to add that staff, we want the money to come with that, that they're going to be receiving to not only pay for the staff, but also for any office space and any other costs that we may incur. Child welfare is one that I've talked to you about as well, I think individually. This is an issue where having placement for kids who are in custody of local Departments of Social Services is an issue not just here in Union County, but really all over the state and the country. And I really wanted to shine a light on this with the state, that somebody, we've got to do something about this, this is a real problem. So we'll be working on this, it really is just what I would call kind of an attention getter that we expect that the state and the local LMEs are going to do their job in terms of providing appropriate placement. The next item came from Commissioner Rushing to establish drag queen performances as adult entertainment at adult establishments. And so that's a very specific ask that we'll have. And then the next item is to allow for flexibility of Boards of Commissioners to participate remotely in meetings. I think you all remember that during COVID, we had some special legislation that worked there that is not around any longer to allow for that remote participation in meetings. And then lastly, we have three issues that are what I'm calling kind of UCS issues slash support. The first is around school calendar flexibility and the local authority to create calendars that align with community needs. So this would allow aligning that semesters with community colleges. It wouldn't require any additional funding and that what we would be stating is that we support school districts having local authority to create their calendars that align best for them and the needs of the community. The second is to show support for the school system in terms of the continued implementation of the LEA Modernization Project. This is their financial system that has been slow in getting implemented and it being, I think, successful in giving them all the things that they thought that it was going to give. We want to, again, show our support to get that completed for these pilot LEAs of which Union County Public Schools is one. And then lastly, charter school accountability is the ability to verify student population data that is utilized for what we were talking about earlier, those monthly payments. What we've heard from the school system is that is something that can sometimes be a challenge in dealing with the thirty-some charter schools that they have and so ensuring that that data is given in a way that's verifiable and that's accountable for where those tax dollars are going. So those are the primary goals. Any question about those before I give you one last one to think about and to give some feedback on? Yes, David?
The item regarding remote meeting availability. State statute allows for remote meetings in the event of states of emergency.
Correct.
What kind of additional flexibility beyond that are we talking about?
I think, the City of Monroe actually has some language that they use. It's probably, it would really be to allow a remote ability at any point if the board had a policy that called for that. So it would be given that flexibility more broadly than just in states of emergency.
Something that could be invoked relatively easily?
Relatively easily.
Okay, well, I would very much be against that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I tend to agree with Commissioner Williams on this. One thing is to participate, maybe a discussion or like a question, maybe a, you know, period where we're asking questions in a work session maybe. The problem, and where I saw the problem in before, and I've had to participate being in the hospital, the real problem I see with this is that I'm on and we're going up to a controversial vote. Say, I can't hear you, I'm losing you, and then click, I'm gone because I don't want to be participating. Even though I listen to everything, you know, losing that connection, I think it's very important that we're probably here for especially votes. So are we talking about votes or are we talking about?
So I think it would, in my mind and what I've looked at, is it would have to align with a board policy. So all these things are just saying, if you laid out the reasons that it could happen as strictly as you wanted them to be, but still allowed it outside of a state of emergency. So it would really be up to the board, I think. It's just giving you the flexibility to have a policy that would allow it under the circumstances that you think are appropriate. That I think could cover all the things you just said.
Anybody else have any issues with that?
I tend to support, you know, staff if there needs to be, you know, a quick decision or something made. Obviously, it's, you know, the chair and the other board members would be contacted. But in my experience, there are times when a quick Zoom meeting, for example, if a board member is on business out of state or out of county, a quick Zoom meeting would get something approved or not approved so that staff can move forward. So I tend to support having that flexibility as long as it followed policy.
Yeah, I think the point is now you don't have that flexibility. So the way the statute's written, you only have that during a state of emergency.
And I personally think there's a strong public policy reason to not ask for something different than the rest of the state has and to not create additional obstacles between us and the citizens who like to come to these meetings. And in terms of meetings that might call for a quick decision, those are often meetings where something more perhaps controversial is being considered. That's all the more reason to have a public meeting in a physical place where citizens can come. And I just, I think it would be a mistake to ask for something that is quite a bit different than the way the rest of the state operates.
I do want to, maybe this, I think that begs a clarification. Except for maybe in the case of the specific things about the school system, which is UCS specific and maybe the county line issue, I don't foresee us looking for any special legislation, which would be local in nature. Anything in these would be statewide applicable.
General statutes.
Yes, yes. So.
And just my personal opinion, I would dare to say that most people are online tonight viewing this meeting as opposed to being here in person. So again, I don't think it would prevent constituents for, you know, following the meeting.
You all had something similar with the school system and may still have it. So what does the school system do?
Well, you're, by state statute, you have to notice the meeting in advance. So even in this particular situation, again, this is a legislative agenda that's going to the state. We're not trying to ask for a special favor just for Union County to have flexibility. This is a legislative agenda. So you have to announce the meeting and people have plenty of time to either decide they're going to be in person or watch it online. And we, history will show that thousands of viewers are watching online as opposed to maybe twenty people coming in person.
Yeah, what I would say is I clearly hear the sensitivity to this one. So as I talked to Daniel, I mean, frankly, you know, some of these, when we talk to the delegation, they may say, we're not supporting that. You know, I can tell you that, you know, we're not going to go forward with things that the majority of our delegation says they're not going to support because we're just, that's just not the approach we're going to take.
I can see some abuse that could be opened up here. For example, you know, you've got a couple commissioners that can show up and the other commissioners are out of town. I skipped a meeting, Lynn, you'll remember this. I skipped a meeting one time because it was going to be three commissioners making the decision on a major multi-million dollar issue for the county and it was only going to be three of us. And I didn't come to that meeting so there would not be a quorum. You know, I can see where two commissioners or three commissioners might get together and say, well, this is controversial, so we don't want this one to say, so he's going to be on vacation, you know, let's call a meeting and he won't have, you know, say in it. There's just a lot of different ways this could go and over the years experiencing that, I would be concerned about how.
You can take it off the list, I'm open to all of that.
But Commissioner Rushing, I still, I want to point out that even when you vote in a Zoom meeting, if you don't have a quorum, you can't vote. Then you're just taking up Zoom time. But if you don't have a quorum in a Zoom meeting, you can't call a vote.
Okay, I got that.
I agree with Commissioner Rushing and Commissioner Williams and I'd make a motion that we strike this from the Legislative Agenda list.
Any discussion on that motion? And again, it would be, how it's written is what's important to me, that I really do. You know, I just, I've seen sometime in the past, now, if the school board's already doing it, why can we not do it?
That's not a question, I don't think that's a question I can answer. I'm not, I don't give them guidance on that, so.
Commissioner David, I mean, David Williams. Commissioner David, I mean, David Williams, you've had a question. Commissioner Brian Helms, do you got a question about it or comment?
No, I'm prepared to support Commissioner Helms, Richard Helms's motion.
Commissioner Brian Helms?
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, I understand what Melissa's saying. And I think that there are cases where this could be a perk to have. But for, for my opinion, my opinion is this, is that, is that the county has elected us to be in office to represent them. And I think that we have a duty to be here in person at regular meetings. I believe that that's something that we should do. And so outside of special circumstances, I believe that the meeting should be in person.
Is there, so I'm hearing, I kind of hear where I'm at, a couple of different ways on this. Is there any kind of compromise we can come to on this that's in the middle? That we targeted a little bit more?
I would, I'm happy to make a suggestion that I can come back at the next meeting with, I can, we can give this some thought, talk to others. I can talk to Jason more, and we can maybe come up with something that might be palatable. How about that?
Yeah, because I can see, like I said, we had a situation where one of the commissioners was not able to participate in a closed session meeting, but did participate on the phone. But just, we weren't sure if they could vote or not. So there's a lot of uncertainties here. We all got a little spoiled during COVID of being able to do things that it's kind of nice to be able to do. However, you know, I do, I see both sides of this. So-
We'll work on it a little bit more and bring you back in a different way.
Well, we got a motion on the floor, so I'd ask you to amend it, to let her come back maybe at the next meeting and see if there's a compromise in the middle of this. Because even if we don't do it, anybody else asking for this?
I know that Monroe is, my guess is there are probably others who are seeking some flexibility.
Right. So the flexibility is nice. It's just the accountability of it. Like I said, I see a situation where a commissioner might not want to vouch for something controversial, and they lose connection. And I've said that before. I said that years ago when we were going through this. But as been in, after being in the hospital, I saw a very, it was a good ability to be able to participate from a hospital bed. So again, you know, Commissioner Richard Helms, would you mind tabling the motion until we, until they come back with something that Monroe has?
I just sent vote on that motion, and if you want to come back and propose something else, I would entertain that.
Okay. So the motion is to take it off the legislative agenda?
Yes.
And not bring it back?
No, I didn't say that.
So take it off the agenda and then bring it back?
Bring back information, let's take it off right now.
Okay. So motion's been made. Any comments on the motion? Any questions on the motion?
I'll just say this. So I will support the motion under, well, with the understanding that additional options will be brought to us.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So I may ask for Van to come up and help with this last one. This is one that Van just had gotten, from the Taxes Administrators Office, had gotten a call last week with some additional counties to see how we might feel about a possible proposal to make some changes to the elderly or disabled tax exclusion. So we currently have about 21, a little more than 2,100 property owners who operate under that program and receive some relief to their property tax. Most of them are in the Monroe or Vance townships. Based on what staff has provided, we deny about 100 applicants per year who are within less than $2,000 above the threshold, which the income threshold currently is $33,800. That is set by DOR, by the Department of Revenue. So this, my reaction was this does not align to our guiding principles, which the one that I said was that we're always looking for flexibility and more revenue. This is the opposite of that. This would be providing some relief, which would affect our revenue. However, I think there's some validity to some feedback that we've gotten under the most recent revaluation. I think that's what the state association is reacting to, particularly with large suburban and urban areas as well, as well as coastal and mountain areas. They're looking for how they can provide some relief in those areas. So I'm not sure if this is something the board would be interested in. If you are, we would, Van can continue to work with those folks. This may not go anywhere, but I don't want him to go down this path with those counties if you're not supportive of looking at some expansion of that elderly and disabled tax exclusion opportunity. So I've got a head nod.
I support that.
Okay. Okay. If I hear no, I think we'll continue to work on that. That one will probably come back to you with, because that, you know, we want to make sure that that aligns with where you are and your thinking. So the last thing is tomorrow I will send out an invitation for delegation breakfast on Monday, February the 20th. We had spent some time working with our delegation to see what works best for them. Mondays are always better for them, early in the morning before they go back to Raleigh. So we will do this at a location where we can have breakfast, talk about our delegation, our legislative asks, hear from them on things that they're dealing with or think are important to us, give you some opportunity to engage with them in that setting. We have typically invited our Congressman, Congressman Bishop as well, to hear from him about what's going on at the federal level. So you'll get that invitation and hopefully be able to make that. It'll be a fairly early morning breakfast. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Any questions? I did have one. The animal disposal, was that included in that?
I'm glad, I meant to mention that to you today. I don't, we don't need a legislative fix on that. I'm working on, I've got some ideas. I've been working with the solid waste director on that. I need to have some conversation with the individual you had mentioned to me. So I think we can find another way to resolve that that wouldn't take a legislative solution.
Just to make the rest of the board aware, one of the rendering company who picked up poultry, horses, cows, large animals, farm animals, things like that, they've changed their business method or model. And they were talking about no longer picking up dead animals in Union County. So right now, our farmers would haul to the landfill, put in a trailer that would be hauled away. And that's been an issue and a problem if you were not aware of it or not made aware of it. So could be a significant problem for the county with livestock, poultry.
We're going to work with a normal solution.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else, manager?
Close sessions, don't need to-
Go back into closed session, finish a couple of items that are still left on there.
Should we go ahead and do comments before we do that?
Certainly can, if you choose.
Let's do that. County managers' comments?
I have no comments tonight. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Richard Helms?
No comments.
Commissioner David Williams?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brian Helms?
Yeah, I'll just say very quickly that I appreciated the speaker tonight that addressed the county line. Yeah, I said this before, but, you know, I've received numerous emails about it. I did watch the Mecklenburg County discussion on this last month. And to your point, that was some disparaging comments made about our county, a county that I'm proud to reside in. Now, I would just say this. I would say that the discussion that I saw turned towards tax dollar implications. I mentioned this before, I'll say it again, that what we're dealing with, with this issue, is more than just tax dollars. What we're dealing with here is we're dealing with children that are going to UCPS, that could potentially go to Mecklenburg. We're dealing with, you know, a variety of other issues there with businesses. So the impact will be felt at the family level. So this is a topic that is very near and dear to my heart. It's one that, that I want to see resolution with. And it's my hope that that resolution can come through a legislative process that will not adversely affect the Union County residents that live in those areas. I was happy to see what we saw with the legislative agenda. Glad to see that the topics of charter school transparency is on there, as well as UCPS calendar. With that, thanks to all of our staff. Thanks for the folks watching at home. Appreciate your participation. Thank you.
Vice Chairman, Melissa Merrill?
No.
And I have no comments either. So the motion will be to reconvene the closed session?
Proper motion.
I move that the board reconvene closed session for the following, in accordance with GS 143-1318-111A1, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential, pursuant to GS 13053A-98, and in accordance with GS 143318.11A3, to consult with an attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege and to consider the, and give instructions concerning the handling of the following judicial action, the county, Union County versus the town of Marshville. And in accordance with GS 143-318.11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, and performance, character, character fitness, and conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employer, employee or prospective public officer or employee. You need a vote on that? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? None. No.